In the matter of New York State Move-In, New York State Program rollout, and like one application plan overview, we have our Director of Development Chuck Clark, who's going to make a presentation. Chuck, you've got the floor.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President, and hello, Council members. As you know, Governor Hokel has been very strongly in support of programs that provide affordable housing opportunities to municipalities all throughout the state. What I'm talking to you about this evening is an opportunity that we have before us in partnership with Erie County Planning, with the LHDC. We are going to be applying to the most recent program that the state has rolled out. It's called Move-In New York. And Move-In New York is a program that brings a unique construction modality to building homes, and I'll explain that to you in a minute. They're putting $50 million into a statewide rollout, and these programs are designed to help municipalities redevelop and reactivate residential lots to the tax roll. I reinforce, these are taxable properties. These are not nonprofit homes. And this type of, participating in this type of program would help us in our future application for pro-housing certification. This process is highly competitive, so there's $50 million being allocated to this program. Homes and community renewal is taking 15 across the state, with the exception of New York City. Either municipalities, land banks, or nonprofit organizations to be selected for this program. To be in it, you have to apply. It's on a rolling basis, and I'll explain more about that in a minute. But the rolling basis continues from now through January 30th. To be in the game, you have to have at least 10 ready-to-build lots. And the city of Lackawanna, in partnership with the folks I've already mentioned, have identified 10 vacant residential lots in the city's first and second ward. So Gene, if we can, I'm sorry, that was the first slide we had up here, so if you could go to the second slide. This program, Move-In New York, utilizes something called cross-mod design. It's manufactured housing design built to stick construction specifications. So stick is construction on ground. They're built on permanent foundations with either no crawl space or a crawl space. The state has tested this program in Syracuse, and the model that they are rolling out in the $50 million program is a 1,400-square-foot model, three-bedroom, one bath, you know, various designs with inside porches and garages. To maintain the integrity of this construction, and to more importantly, make sure that residents and applicants are able to qualify for financing, you'll see in the deck that these homes are built to HUD manufactured specifications in terms of both construction and safety. And more importantly, from the consumer's standpoint, they follow Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac guidelines. And if you're not familiar with those, those are the secondary market banking industry organizations that conform mortgages for securities that they sell on the secondary market. And what's important about that is that the only mortgages that they put as collateral on those programs are conforming mortgage programs. So what that means for the consumer is that they are not going after high-price financing. They are in the market for competitive market-rate mortgages at prevailing rates. And the other program highlight is, even though those build-to-suit criteria that I mentioned are in place, all of the local municipalities, their codes, their inspections and other conditions come into play. So if you'd go on to the next slide, Gene. So again, cross-mod is a cross between manufactured housing and stick housing. I'll show you an example of that in a minute. The beauty of this program is that the state has tested the ability to build these programs, or build these homes in six months or less, which means that they're quick to market, quick to the tax roll, and quick to the consumer. The target audience for this is low-to-mod income consumers between 70%, I'm sorry, that's a typo, 70% and 130% of the median area income, not 100, 230%, excuse me. The beauty of this program is there's a $75,000 subsidy to qualifying applicants. So the program has been tested at the 1,400-square-foot model, which is what they're rolling out to construct at $250,000. The program subsidy is $75,000, and the borrower would have to qualify for a conventional mortgage of $175,000. $250,000 sounds pretty pricey, but in the Buffalo market, the median average sale price is $265,000. So this is about 6% less. Over the last five years, these prices have risen an average of 5% a year. So Buffalo is a rather growing market. We're three times higher than the national growth rate in terms of average median sales. So while 250 may sound high, this is an opportunity to get low-to-mod consumers into a home that's about 6% than the median average.
Chuck, do you mind if I ask a question now, or do you want us to wait?
I prefer you wait. Moving on to the next one, because I'm sure in the presentation I may or may not answer your question. If not, I'll be happy to. So you'll see on the next page, this is an example of the home from the test in Syracuse. You'll see that it's a one-story construction. It fits very well within most neighboring communities, including Lackawanna. So you've got a couple of different views. The one on the left of your slides is where it's about 80% complete. The one on the right is where there's driveway shrubbery and all that, and then there's an aerial view. Move on to the next one. So again, real quickly, the eligibility requirements here. You have to either be a municipality land bank or a nonprofit developer, or a partner with them. What we're asking you to do, and what we've asked the zoning board to do, is help us take some steps to strengthen our application. And so you'll see, you know, one of the criteria is you have to have evidence of full site control, which we do. We own all these sites. We have gotten the appropriate zoning variances that are necessary. If you move on to the development sites, you'll see that they can be scattered or concentrated. And when I get into our sites in a minute, you'll see that there's some method to the madness here. Appropriately zoned to accommodate the cross-mod construction, which this is mixed residential areas, so it definitely does. The lots have to be in a ready-to-build condition with minimal work necessary to get the lots ready to be built upon. And again, of sufficient size within the 1,400-square-foot example. And an applicant, which would be the city of Lackawanna through the LHDC, actually, I'm gonna say that differently, it's the LHDC on behalf of the city of Lackawanna, we have to commit to having lots ready to go within six months. And that is one of the rationales behind the lots that were chosen. The LHDC was chosen as our partner because, among many things, they have a tremendous amount of experience with these nonprofit, I'm sorry, these low-to-mod income homes. Has a nonprofit entity, which fits one of the criteria. They're a community development corporation, which is a good, the appropriate pass-through for this type of money. In addition, they have a tremendous amount of experience with all of the grant paperwork and criteria and other requirements to get the applications through. Plus, they have a strong track record of working with Habitat for Humanity on similar homes with similar dimensions and similar lot sizes to what we're talking about here. The city does not have that designation alone. We do not have that depth of experience alone. So we're bringing that partnership together with us, guided by the LH, I'm sorry, by the Erie County Department of Planning. If we move on to the next slide, our application has to have a number of components to it. We have to show that we have capacity, commitment, and capability. And if you look at those arrows, we had to take a number of steps. Some of them are already completed. The last step, well, the second-last step would be the city council, if you're so inclined. But if you go from left to right on the slide, you had to have a minimum of 10 lots to be in the game. If you do not have 10 lots, don't bother applying, okay? There is no such thing as coming in with whatever you have. Minimum required to participate is 10 lots. You needed to have administrative support, which we got from Mayor Afalo. Continuing on that planned support, we needed support from the county, which we have the Erie County Executive Letter of Support, further support from our planning board. So all of the planned support is in place, with the exception of the council, which hopefully, you know, makes its way through. The second criteria was build-able lots. All of these lots are a little bit unique in terms of their size. They're very similar to the lots that Habitat for Humanity homes were built on, which are a little bit less than the zoning specifications. But with the zoning board's cooperation, we have contingent approvals to consider the same types of variances which are outlined in this presentation. And once they're, once we're approved, if we're approved by New York State, full site plans will come into play. Further evidence of site control will be the council resolution. So if you are so inclined to act in support, your resolution tonight would be used as evidence of site control, okay? And then LCDC would submit the application. Real quickly, moving on, if you look at the targeted lots, Gene, next slide, you'll see that we've identified 10 lots. Seven in the first ward, three in the second ward. And again, the criteria for selecting these lots is pretty straightforward. We had to be in appropriate zoning. We had to be in areas where we're serving a low-to-mod target audience. And these lots have to be readily build-able, with minimal work involved. The work we've already undertaken with the variances was pretty straightforward. We've done this 10 times already with Habitat homes, so this is not anything we haven't done before. The low-to-mod target audience is important for a couple of things. With the help of the Erie County Planning, we know that from Electric Avenue west to Route 5, there's 6,000 residents, according to the census. Over 4,400 of them are classified as low-to-mod. So we're definitely in a sweet spot of that. Out of that 4,400, on a citywide basis, there's 11,650 people classified as low-to-mod. So about 38% of the population that's low-to-mod sits within the first ward. So in terms of the sweet spot here, this is definitely, I'm sorry, not the first ward, from Electric Avenue to Route 5. This is definitely the sweet spot. But the key here is, again, you gotta have 10 lots to be in it. And these lots have to be pretty much, I won't call them shovel-ready, but ready to go within, you know, short periods of time, so that you're constructed in six months. If you flip to the next slide, Gene, for build-able lots, I won't burden you with, this is a really busy slide, but this was a summary of all of the lots, their dimensions, where obviously the city is the owner. All of them require some form of variance, from lot size to front yard to rear yard, side yard. You see the Xs where those variances would be in place. And again, these are not anything different than what we've done several times already in the past five years with Habitat-built homes. And as I mentioned earlier, the zoning board did contingently approve these variances. And when I say contingently approve, they contingently approve them in concept, based upon subsequent approval of our application by New York State and full site plans for each home. We are not eliminating site plans for the homes. I just want to make that clear. Site control, move on to the next slide, Gene. Your resolution would be the first step towards that. That resolution pretty much authorizes us, gives us your compliance to apply. Again, there's no guarantee we're getting picked, but we certainly are tailor-made for the target audience for this grant. If we are approved, the ask is that you, through a future resolution, would convey these lots to the LHDC for a dollar. This program, unlike the Habitat program, does not provide for money to purchase the lots. So we're asking you to consider that as an important feature here. You'll see on the end of this slide and into the next one, the long-term benefits from these 10 lots. Basically, you would recover the, at current market values, you would recover the cost of these lots in approximately one and a half years. And if the city's application is denied, or not approved, however you want to say it, there'd be no variances enacted, there would be no sale transfer. Okay, these things stay in our possession until we know. Gene, if you'd flip to the next slide. Again, very busy slide here, but mathematically, what I wanted to show you was that the sum total of the 10 lots is $40,000, $40,500 approximately in market value. If you looked at a sale price of $250,000, working with the assessor, we're looking at an estimated equalization rate of 60% of the capital improvement. So that's $150,000 per thousand basis, 150. The estimated annual tax on one of these homes at our current equalization rate and our current tax rate is a little over $2,700. If you look at that on a cumulative basis over the 10 homes, that's slightly over $27,000. That's where you get your one and a half-year payback on these. The other thing that's important to keep in mind is a couple of different things. Not only is that, you know, an annual basis for the tax return, but if you look at it over a, you know, two, three, four-year period, whatever you want to, you are earning taxable income on this every single year. A point of comparison I would make to you, and it's not on the slide, but if you wanted to do your own math, if you did, if you sold all the lots at $40,000 on a per-thousand basis, for all of the lots collectively, you'd make $735, okay? You would have to increase the value of the property almost 3.75 times, a factor of 3.75, to equate to what one home would get you in taxes on that property, okay? So the lots in and of themselves, they're great things to have in the community, but they're doing us no good. They're costing us money in some cases, or they're sitting inactive. You have an opportunity here to bring in almost $30,000 in revenue a year, which isn't significant. But what I want you to understand is this is the step in the door to advancing our pro-housing certification application, okay? By having this program in place, if we're selected, we have the ability to prove that we're taking the steps to become pro-housing. I started the workshops with the state. I started going to the class sessions that they have. And essentially, you have to meet a certain growth threshold over a one, over a year-over-year, over a three-year basis. And we don't meet any of those thresholds, okay? So if you don't meet those thresholds, then you gotta go to the next tier of activity, which is, you know, council resolutions, mayoral support, but you have to show that you've engaged in programs that are bringing in housing. So what's the importance of pro-housing certification? Under the Hokel administration, to apply for the larger economic development grants like DRI in New York Forward, you have to be a pro-housing certified community. If you're not a pro-housing certified community, you're not in the game. So the benefit of building these homes is certainly, there's revenue. So we're moving from a cost situation or a no-revenue situation to taxable. But in the grand scheme, about $30 million budget, you know, $32,000 is nice, but it's not the be-all, end-all. The be-all, end-all is the bigger end game, being in the mix for the larger grants, up to $10 million. And again, there's no guarantee you're getting picked on any of these things, but you can't even play right now, okay? So the goal of this is to do a couple of different things. One, you know, bring in new residents or existing residents moving from rental to ownership into lots that are almost impossible to market on a market-grade basis, almost impossible, okay? But we have proven, with the LHDC's support, with Erie County, we have proven through the Habitat program that we can build on these lots. And they turn, they are turned into ownership quickly. So Gene, with that said, with the last slide, just quick summaries here. We have the mayor's approval in concept. We have the zoning board approvals. We have the planning board approvals. We have the county executive's letter of support. We're talking to you this evening, you know, about the program, and hopefully, you're supporting resolution. The application process opened already. It opened on November 15th. And this application window is rolling from now until January 31st. So assuming, if you were so inclined to act, we are ready to go. We have an application all ready to go, contingent upon attachments, meaning all of these things that are here, and we would be ready to move forward. What I want to say to you is this, Gene, if you could bring this one down and get the next slide up. You do not have, these are new, so I'm gonna ask your cooperation for just another second to look at these things here. So Gene, if you would slide that TV so they can see it. So most of these lots, while Gene is doing that, most of these lots, eight out of 10 of these lots are vacant green lots. There's nothing to them, they're open. There's two lots in question that the community is concerned about, and I just want you to understand what the concern is. So this, Gene, maybe, so the people here, no, no, so the people here can see it as well. I'm sure they can, both ways, the best they can. So this is, this is, this is an aerial view of 115 Holland. 115 Holland is the city-owned lot that's in the middle of the two homes. There's a pathway there that, you know, and this has been here for decades. People use that to get over, I believe that's Wilkes-Barre Avenue. There's a store at the end of that pathway, you know, it's been a cut through. But again, you're gonna have to trust my judgment on this one, because a lot of work has gone into it. We looked at, we, taking the criteria of the program, we identified 13 lots that could have fit this program. We selected these 10. Gene, if you would slide to the community garden slide, I'll come back to 88 Center Street. Go to the next one. The three lots that were not chosen for this program were not chosen for a reason. They're the Lackawanna Community Garden. And they sit on 27, 29, and 33 Bethlehem Street. The Community Garden is not just a community endeavor. It's part of all of the Human Services supports this. The Lackawanna Stakeholders Coalition supports this. The city, I think, maybe three, four years ago, when DeSantis was DPW guy, invested water infrastructure in irrigating this site. So to, for example, if you wanted to say, kick out 115 Holland, the only other option you have is to displace the Community Garden, okay? Because there, well, I'm not saying that the 10 lots or the 13 lots are the only ones we can build on. There are multiple other ones that either have DEC issues, creeks running through them, other approvals that we would need to get done, and they will never get done in six months. So they would never qualify for this program. So the lots that you have here are the only ones that qualify for this program. And if you kick one out to bring you under 10, don't apply, you're done. Gene, if you can go to 88. The other one that's a concern is the open lot at 88 Center Street, which is an open lot with improvement, meaning it's got blacktop on it. Its purpose, I guess, years and years ago, long before, at least I got here, and perhaps long before that, it's been a parking facility for people who live in that neighborhood. But with all due respect and in all fairness to the city, that is the picture that more often than not, we see of that lot, okay? That is, that is a code enforcement frequent flyer, okay? And again, I don't think there's any ill intent by anybody. There's nobody applying that. But if you have your choice between that or the homes that were communicating to you, I think the choice becomes obvious. This is not a commercial public parking lot. This is just a lot with accommodation. So we're not taking away anything that, you know, like the Memorial Field Lot or anything of that nature. So again, with all due respect to the people who use it for whatever purposes they use it at, if you're looking for the highest and best use of the land, it's, there's your choices. Your choices are either that or the homes that we were showing. So with that said, I think I overstayed my welcome in terms of comments. Hopefully, this was informative. Both myself, myself, Al, Andrew Juski from LHDC, and Paul are happy to answer any questions that the council might have. Yes.
Could you go back to that 115 Holland, please?
Yeah.
How far, how far is the street from that, is that a street there?
That's, that's, that's Holland.
Okay, where's the next?
That's Wilkes-Barre, right there.
Here?
Yep.
So where's the streets going this way?
There aren't any.
There aren't any.
Wilson is all the way.
Oh, Wilson by the playground?
Yeah, and then, and then to your right, the part, the closest one would be the wire.
The wire, okay.
So that's not a, that's, you know, that's obviously, I get where you're going. That's the path there is just a, you know, gravel paved type of path. And that is, that is a 30 by 100 lot or what have you. So that is one of the complicated ones to fit in, but it certainly can happen. We've built in smaller, so anyway, that's that. So I've pretty much conveyed everything that I have for you in terms of that. The closing point I would, I just want to say is, you're entitled to make whatever decision you feel is necessary. This program is just one of many opportunities. In fact, Gene, I did, forgive me, if you would go back one more slide, I promise I'll be done after this. Go back to the first deck, because I want to show them where this all fits in. It should be the very last slide. No, one more. Is there, was there one more after that? There you go. So this is, what we're talking about is the Move-In New York program. If you look at the bullets under, the subbullets under the second entry, where it says other programs under consideration, there's a program run through the Buffalo Erie Niagara Land Improvement Corporation. You may know it as BENLEC. They have ARPA money. And again, forgive the typo there, it should be ARPA, not R-A-A-P, it should be ARPA. But they have used their ARPA funds to help communities like Lackawanna. It's going on right now in Chictowaga and in Buffalo. They are using ARPA funds very similar to what the state is using for Move-In New York. And there are, they have approached Lackawanna about potentially identifying some lots where we can partake in that program as well. And then, on a bigger scale, you're all familiar with these lots that are listed over here, 539 Ridge, which was the site of what we were hoping was gonna be the Doug Jamal Project. That has, well, Doug Jamal's project has died, but we have not given up on negotiating with other developers for that site. And if you look at that from that perspective, that's at the top of Ridge and Center Street. And if we were to get something there and you work all the way down, there would be, that would be a combination of eight infill homes in Center Street, inclusive of the ones that were included for this program. And if we could get something at the top of Ridge, that would pretty much put a cap on redeveloping, at least investment in that neighborhood, when you count the flash bed. 264 Ridge is the, what's left of the former Friendship House property. And then the very last large parcel would be 100 Dona, or the former Lincoln Annex, or if you know it, is the former Friendship House site, would be, that is a brownfield. So that's gonna take a little bit more involvement in terms of what can go there and how it can go there. But all of these things together, plus what I've talked to you about this evening, all would be included in our pro-housing application. And we are looking at this program, the Move-In New York program, is the first actual physical step to doing that if we are chosen. So with that said, I am done with my remarks and open it up to you.
Great job, Chuck. Thank you very much for your effort on that. Council member Mufly, you said you had a question?
I did. In your presentation, you mentioned the comparison of price based on this, the city of, or, excuse me, the city of Buffalo, the going rate of $265,000 for an average home versus what these mods would be priced at, at $250,000. Are they the same in specs? Is the comparison based on the same size?
Yes, so by fitting, one of the criteria that the state has built into the Move-In New York program is that the specs for a cross-mod home are the same as a stick-built home. So you, so if you had one of these cross-mods, and you were in a neighborhood with stick-built homes, meaning construction on-site, your comps, the appraisal comps, are the same.
So dollar for dollar, these houses are pretty much average going rate?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. But in the case of this program, because it's targeting low-to-mod, they have found a way to produce these things at about 6% less than the median average sale price. But the comps are the same.
Possibly applicants, they get $75,000.
Correct, Chuck.
I'd like to follow up on that. From a prospective applicant's point of view, if, what is the procedure? Is it a lottery? What's the procedure for that?
Great question. We are going to have a robust marketing effort that would be targeted very heavily in Lackawanna to include everything from, you know, traditional media, public relations, community information sessions, outreach through council members, outreach through the mayor. So there's gonna be grassroots and regular marketing. We are gonna have more than, if we're chosen, we're gonna have more than 10 people interested in these sites, okay? Al from LHDC is working with Belmont Housing. Belmont has a lottery system for selecting people. But we're gonna have to use a lottery system for this, because one of the criteria of the Move-In program is that there's, you know, no hand-picked selections, there's no weighted votes, there's none of that. You pretty much have to make it available. That does not mean that you can't or shouldn't market heavily in your community, which we're gonna do. But there would be a combination of a marketing effort in a lottery. And we don't have all of that fleshed out yet, because A, we haven't been chosen for the program yet. But B, if we are chosen, there's the assumption that there's gonna be some criteria that we have to address, you know, in those marketing efforts and in that selection. So we're not gonna get too far ahead of ourselves there. What we do know is, you know, the framework of what we'd wanna do. What we do know is, you know, the framework of what we want to do, we'll wait on flushing out a plan until we know.
And the other criteria is that the applicant would have to qualify for conventional mortgage also, right?
Correct.
Okay, let me ask you this then. Suppose someone selected, we get the program, we have our 10 applicants. Is there a time requirement that the new owners have to live in the house before they can sell it? Is there a recap?
10 years.
$75,000?
10 years.
It's 10 years.
10 years. And they can move, but there's a clawback. So if you leave early, there's a higher clawback on the 75. And you walk down to 10 years, it's almost nothing. So it's, it's an out clause that's very punitive in the first five, six years. It decreases as you go along.
Yeah, so there is a recapture on it.
There is a recapture. Because again, the whole point of this is not just to give you a subsidy to flip. It's to incentivize you to, you know, stay in the community if you happen to be a renter who wants to move into homeownership and can do it. Or if you're in a lower end home than this and you want to move up. Or, you know, even best case, equal case scenario, bringing in somebody new from the community, from outside the community into the community. So either way, the whole point of this is long-term homeownership, not buy and flip.
Two other points, not related to that, that I'd like to just make at this point. Not too long ago, we as a council had to grapple with the Airbnb issue. And we decided as a community, as a council, to not permit that within the city. One of those considerations was so that we would be considered for this grant move in application. So that, that was a difficult pill for a lot of us to swallow. And it hurt some of the homeowners because they had a lucrative business going. But the intention was bigger than that in the hopes that we could have, in the big picture, a more productive community, so to speak. And the last point is that 115 Holland, if that remains part of the 10, obviously, it'll create some kind of an inconvenience for people who want to use that pathway. But it's not insurmountable. The other point is, in the event the city doesn't get the program, that property will not be affected at all.
None of the properties listed in this presentation would be touched in the framework that I presented them tonight in any way, shape, or form. Not to say that we will not try to pursue some other form of development on these sites, whether it be Habitat for Humanity, some other program. This one is getting the focus that it's getting because of the time urgency, November to January, the rolling amount of money and the limited amount of money. And again, I'll emphasize, there's no crystal ball that says we're getting this. But the county, both through the Polin County's office, through county planning, the LHDC, they were on us almost the minute that the application announcement went out. Because on a profile basis, Lackawanna fits. Whether or not we're going to be selected depends on the strength of our application. So everything that I've shared with you tonight about what we did with zoning and planning, mayor's support, county executive's support, and what you all may or may not decide to do. But your piece of it in concept, if you choose to go forward, your resolution is the last piece. And then we would be ready to submit this and then we, you know, we let the ball roll where it rolls. But we have to, we have to have 10 to be in.
So in the event that we do get this grant, 115 will then become developmental grounds. There is no, there is no way that we can change our decision today in the event that this is granted through the state. So 115 is, I know you mentioned the word insurmountable and there's, there's this kind of assumption that it's not, I don't want to use the word important, but it is extremely vital to the residents of the First Ward. That pathway is actually what serves as a street. Although not wide enough and there's obviously no vehicles that go up and down that area, it does provide a gateway for residents to go shopping in this, you know, food desert that we live in. It also provides a safe way for children to get to their school, playground. It is very vital for the residents of the First Ward. I understand that it is a very important piece to this grant application and that it will take us under the threshold of 10 housing prospects in terms of developing a home. However, I, as much as I support this endeavor and want to see us become a pro housing market, I cannot strip that away from my residents of the First Ward. I just can't. It is detrimental to their livelihood. It has been there, it has been there. It stretches from Wilkes-Barre to, excuse me, Wilkes-Barre to Holland. And then I question what's to be done with the remaining part that stretches midway to Wilkes-Barre. Because that will become vacant and then that may become another developed home or a thing, something of that nature. As much as I would love to support this, if it's a take it all or leave it, I'm going to have to go with leave it. But I need something, I need something that we can, we can work towards. I know you mentioned the three properties that together create the community garden. Can we minimize that to two? Because although you argue that that is a project that is vital, in reality, it operates three months out of the year. It operates three months out of the year. Whether we like to admit it or not, it produces, produce three months out of the year. It doesn't, it's not all, the weather doesn't allow it to. So if we can minimize that into two lots and then keep the 115, I'm all on board.
Well, I appreciate that. I'm not the one to make that decision. I am telling you, I will leave you with these facts. We need 10 lots to be in the program. If we eliminate a lot without a suitable alternative, we might as well not even apply, we're dead. Okay? So if there is a decision, hypothetically, to eliminate 115 in terms of the community garden or replacing with the community garden, that's an entire conversation that hasn't happened yet, that involves many, many stakeholders beyond the people in this room. We would not be in a timeframe to be able to acceptably and confidently include that lot into the options.
Then we'd have to go back to planning and zoning again?
Well, yeah. Plus, I believe, you know, it would also involve, like I said, there's water infrastructure on that site that we put in there. So if you go, and again, not that anything's insurmountable, I'm just trying to provide you with fact and you all make your decisions where you need to go. But these lots that I identified for you, with all due respect to everything that's been said about everything, these lots had the immediate ability to be converted into buildable lots within six months' time. The, I would question the ability of being able to do that inclusive of the stakeholder communications because, to your point, Council President, we vetted this through the zoning and planning board. We had open meetings on these things. So if we were going to now include these in the program, we're backtracking. We'd have to, you know, open these up as options. And again, nothing's insurmountable, but you're taking yourself out of the window to be able to get into the rolling application process. So I'll leave you with that. You need 10 lots. We believe these 10 lots are the ones. If you all decide they're not the ones, your trade-offs, while respected, will knock us off the ability to be able to apply at this probably midpoint, if you will, mid-tier of the application. Early, early to mid-tier of the application process. So with that, I'll leave that decision to you all.
Can I ask a question? If you have an answer, that's great. I know these, I know these lots you had mentioned were, they weren't just picked out of a hat. They were thought about. There was a lot of thought that went into this process.
Yep.
Why wasn't any of us on board as far as the selection? I would have gave you guys the idea about how detrimental the 115 lot would have been moving forward and we could have worked towards something else.
They were all on the open zoning and planning agendas, aren't they?
They were on them after the decision was made. I listened in, I listened in onto the zoning and planning and I was actually surprised that these were part of the question.
If you want to, I think we're spinning this somewhat a different way. They were finite and decided upon in the sense that these were the only ones short of the community garden that fit the criteria. So they were presented in that fashion. The community garden, the determination to change the community garden was just deemed not productive to the timeframe we were working under. So they were under zoning and planning. There was ample opportunity to comment on these things. And with all due respect, the decision on the lots, you know, from a planning standpoint, sits with the zoning and planning boards and that process was followed.
How long did the process take?
Unfortunately, this is not designed to have a comment from the public. Sorry.
Chuck, can we go back to that 115 Holland?
Sure. That's the other slide.
Where are, where is the, you mentioned the school and the store. Where is that related to that path?
The store is at the top of the tree.
Yeah.
So if you look north at the tree, that building that has a little bit of a red arrow near it?
On Wilkes-Barre.
That's, on Wilkes-Barre, that's the store.
The top of the.
And where is the, where is the school?
The school is near the mosque.
So that's down near the side street?
Midway. Yeah, midway.
But it's closer to the side street than it is to the pathway?
But the majority of the First Ward, or excuse me, the majority of Holland is land. No streets from McGuire.
There's McGuire and there's Wilson.
Correct.
And then, and the mosque is closer to Wilson.
Right. So if you're coming from, if you're coming from the Ridge Road area, you're coming towards, you're coming towards mid Holland and then taking the pathway to Wilkes-Barre. And.
You've still got to walk down. You've still got to walk down the street. Would you rather go down Wilkes-Barre to Wilson?
Wilson doesn't have a sidewalk for children. Wilson Street has no sidewalk and there's cars. This is a safer pathway for children to go through, especially if they're going from the Wilkes-Barre area to Bowder Playground. And that would be the connecting route to Bowder Playground. It's a heavily walked area. I wouldn't be, again, I'm super pro housing, but I also have to be logical in the sense that it would take away from the safety, security of the residents and children. So I'm trying to find somewhere where we can meet halfway.
In the wintertime, who shovels that path?
I actually do. I've been maintaining that pathway for over 20 years. My parents have been before that. Mr. Perry with the house behind my parents' house, which is 113 Holland. My restaurant is the one that's at the end of the pathway. We get a lot of kids, a lot of the community that do walk through that pathway and come to my restaurant. We have a lot of walking, walkers that do use that pathway and it's been like that for decades. And closing that off and building a house over there will basically be shutting me down, shutting my restaurant down. Like I said, I've been maintaining that pathway for over 20 years. Before that, my father's been maintaining it. My dad lives at 113 Holland. It will block off like all the, all the walking pedestrians. The city also put up signs for pedestrians only for that walkway. It's designated as a walkway specifically for the First Warders. Friday prayers, a lot of people park on Holland, walk through the pathway so that they don't congest Wilkes-Barre.
We have a lot of shoppers, I'm sorry. We have a lot of shoppers that actually use the pathway and go to Steelwana and go shopping at the Park Avenue Coke Factory. There's.
They walk from Holland.
They do. They walk from beyond Holland. So they're coming from Ingham, Lehigh, and they walk from, you know, James or Bowder or Clark.
There's no other way. There's no, no other way to get.
Well, you're disrupting safety and their mobility as far as shorter routes. So it's a heavily walkable neighborhood. It always has been. However, the, taking that away would strip away a lot of the safety factors. Absolutely. And now you're carrying things home. So that extra three blocks, it matters when you're carrying items.
So we're asking possibly losing $10 million to benefit the whole city for one, one sidewalk?
It's not just a sidewalk, but that's why I'm open to negotiating with, I know you mentioned that the three lots that are currently the community garden were, it's not move in ready. But if we can make a sacrifice where we can compensate for that and have the best of both worlds, I'm all for it. It's not that I'm shutting down this whole idea. I just wish that there were more minds in the planning stages so we could avoid this at the short time crunch that we're in.
Well, again, with all due respect, Councilwoman, we had all the minds that are required to be involved. And the role of the council, with all due respect, is whether you sell or don't sell. Okay? So zoning by charter did its thing. Planning did its thing. We are before you, doing your piece of it. Okay? So again, I've said this to numerous people. If you want to be involved, there's also, you know, open door in development all the time. These agendas for zoning and planning are posted a month in advance. Okay? So there's ample opportunity to talk about these things. Again, I'm just, I'm making a counterpoint, not arguing with you, I'm just telling you factually. And in terms of where I'm going to leave it is if there is a thought that the community garden lots on Bethlehem are an equal and appropriate substitute, maybe in size there, but in time and requirement and what's involved, they're not. So with all due respect to everybody's concerns with respect to 115, if that is kicked out and there's no immediate suitable entry, which I'm telling you there isn't, other than the ones on Bethelm Street, basically then your action this evening will be to grind the application process to a halt. And if that's a decision, then that's, you know, respected and moved on. But it would be very difficult then when we submit a pro housing application, which I will still do regardless of what you do here this evening. When they question, you know, so what are you doing? What steps have you taken? And they come back and they say, are you aware of this program? Are you aware of that program? Have you made an opportunity or an application to these programs? And I say, you know, no. That makes it very difficult for us to be taken seriously. Does it mean that we'll never be chosen? No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying what we're doing here is trying to make this easier. And as a marketing person, again, with all due respect, I'm going to say my piece as well as everyone else has said theirs. If a business is dependent upon that path to make a go, then that's a challenge. Okay? Because that's a path buried in the middle of a neighborhood. Okay? That's, you're telling me that all the traffic, the majority of the traffic goes to the store through that path? That's counterintuitive. It's counterintuitive to every retail location and every slate analysis that's ever been done in the history of marketing. It doesn't make any sense at all. But that said, I do respect the fact that the community uses it. But if you're telling me that that store solely depends on that gravel lot to survive, that's, that's, that's hard to fathom. And are we going to make that decision to give up that lot in this program for the potential to become pro housing certified, for the potential to apply for $10 million to allow that to continue?
Okay, I have a counter to that and it's not directed towards you, but it is towards my colleagues. The survival of that store has nothing to do with the mobility of children getting from point A to point B. Their safety and security is my, that's paramount to my argument. Getting them safely to the parks, getting them safely to their schools, getting them safely to their friends and family off the bus and getting to wherever they need to get is what my argument is based on. So the survival of his store, with all the respect to the business owner, is not my responsibility or my concern to date. So it's far beyond what just that store provides. There's other businesses that I'm not, my concern isn't the survival of that store, although we all want to see these stores thrive. We do. My concern is the people that are walking from point A to point B. We mentioned that this program is geared towards low income housing and a lot of these people are walkers. So I have to think about that as well. Because if this is going to suffice in that neighborhood, it's because there are low income housing available and ready for this population. So with that comes a walkable community. With that comes them having to rely on safe measures and means to get from point A to point B to do their shopping and to do their, you know, their activities.
I think we're all aware of that. But my question to you is, how do the walkers get to the path?
How do they get to the path? Through sidewalks. Wilson doesn't have sidewalks.
And how long a street is Wilson?
It's actually a pretty long street. It stretches from Ingham all the way down to Steelwana. And there's parts of it that don't have sidewalks, even though the perimeter runs along the park, excuse me, playground.
So is there any other area where you could put a path in along there?
If there was, we would put a house there.
No, a path is smaller than a house.
Well, these lots are structured in a way where, these parcels are structured in a way where they're kind of unconventional.
What if you put a path at 113 Holland?
Oh, at their house? There's, you know, the, the the opportunities or possibilities are pretty slim. I get it. Is there any way that has Lackawanna Housing Is there any way that, has Lackawanna Housing Development looked into purchasing private lots to add into this project? Was that an opportunity?
It's not an option for this.
It's not an option? It never was, even if it was thought, pre-thought?
It's not, it's not for this program, it's not an option. Other programs potentially, not for this. It's, if you look at the qualifiers, it's got to be a municipality, a nonprofit developer on behalf of a municipality or a land bank, and they have to all be dealing with muni lots. Because you're conveying, you're conveying them for a metaphoric dollar. There is no money in the program to buy this, so somebody like LHDC would have to come up with the funds, or the city would have to come up with the funds to buy those lots, which.
Does the city own any property in Bethlehem Park? Because I didn't see any of the parcels.
There was no suitable land in Bethlehem Park. We do own land in Bethlehem Park, but nothing buildable to these dimensions.
All right. Director Clark, thank you very much for your efforts, and we will consider the parameters of this proposal at the meeting. And we'll have our caucus in about 10 minutes at 6:30. We'll take a recess till then.